I'm just sitting here and my machine's working. Welcome. This is the School Board of Lee County Board Workshop. It's 12:30 and welcome.
Hello down there.
And let's see, Mr. Toiber will be late. Mrs. Giavennelli is out of town and Ms. LaRiviere is ill. So this is the group.
Okay.
So I am going to turn it over to Dr. Angela Pruitt. And Dr. McCullers.
As I say, good afternoon. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Dr. McCullers.
Dr. McCullers, before we start, can I ask the board some questions? Okay. So can we talk about what we hope to accomplish with a new evaluation instrument? Each individual, like what do we hope to accomplish? Me, evaluations are about professional development.
Well, I think there are a couple of things. Number one being professional development and how to get better. And the more defined we have, I think, the number system within there in a rubric kind of form, the better the expectations are known and the better we can refer to something when we mark a three or two. I really like that concept. The other thing is if there, I mean, an evaluation form is important if there are concerns and we need to give notice that the performance is not up to snuff and maybe whatever it might lead to after that, it needs, we need the documentation.
Okay. So I think that one of the first things I thought was that the evaluation needed to be refined so that there wouldn't be so much redundancy and we would be able to isolate those issues that indicate continuous improvement or not. And just a more usable and consistent tool to really identify those issues that are pertinent to the performance of the superintendent.
Professional development, I wasn't able to put that into that term. I wasn't able to come up with that term, but you're right. It's guidance for the future, how to get better. I think it informs Cabinet. I think that what I'm looking for in this document is the removal of personal biases and political agendas from the evaluation process. And that's where I think the rubric comes in to be very, very helpful. But I don't know how to do that without a very, very, very lengthy document. So I'm kinda throwing that out there as a, just sort of an underlying, what Dr. McCullers and I put together is all-inclusive. I wanted to throw way more at you than we will ever agree on instead of having to go back to the drawing board and add more stuff. I included everything in hopes that we can whittle it down.
Good. Do you have any goals that you hope to achieve through this evaluation instrument?
Well, I think that most of what I hope to achieve has been stated previously. I think this is, it's an opportunity for anybody in this position to grow professionally, to make sure that you have alignment between the governance team and the expectations of that team on the superintendent. And in doing so, also help focus professional development. It also helps, I know in me personally, it helps not only just me to be able to focus my efforts, but also my evaluations and mid-years I do go back and share with Cabinet. So it's a tool that we use to also improve our work as a team. So my goal would be to continue that while also I do find, you know, the prior incident evaluation instrument was when you do a final and a mid-year and a final and a mid-year and it, you know, sometimes it's a double of the same thing. And also, so I would want to streamline that piece, which I think the board has done in the direction that you're headed, but also the, you know, taking the politics out and being objective in terms of where you're wanting to go and where you see there needs to be improvement and what do you see where we need to continue is something that I would like to see out of this document. So I think that, just having gone through this a number of times, I've received a lot of positive feedback, so I want that to continue, but also just feel that the instrument itself could be refined and so that's, I think, we're headed in the right direction.
Can I add that coming? Go.
Well, I think it's also, to give credit where credit is due. I mean, there are a lot of wonderful things going on and everybody has a job and we all wanna know the things that we're doing well as well as things that we could do better or change or whatever, but it's, that's a purpose for me.
And for me too, it's sort of, it guides my interactions with the superintendent, you know, and I know I've said this to you before, as a new board member, I didn't know what I, the criteria for which I was evaluating the superintendent. And now coming in, I feel like some of the things we're gonna put into this evaluation instrument will really allow us to focus on what is his job and actually assessing his performance instead of do I like him or, you know. I hate to say remove the human element from it, but it does kinda remove personal, I'm hoping that it will remove personal biases. Do you think that that's possible? Should we even seek to do that in an evaluation instrument?
I think it depends on people's motivation. You'll never remove that totally, but I think it gives us all a common language and a common expectation, especially where I saw those rubrics. And I know that's down the road. I mean, I looked through what you, it's very comprehensive. I think we take where we are now and we try to define it better in terms of measuring from one end to the other end. But, and that probably is a long-term process. We might just wanna do sections at a time so that it really, so the language really identifies specifics, which I think then takes the politics out of it when you have some specific, are these things being done or aren't they? The more specific we can be, the better off everybody is, but you'll never take the intent of politics out of it and then people manipulate based on that intent. So I, but this gives us something to work around and be more definite about.
So I would agree with Chris. I think the educational component. At one point when I was in a different school district, on a different board, we actually did a 360 evaluation with the community. And one of the purposes of doing it was to tell the public what our job was as board members because everybody thought that we should be doing certain things. And when you send out that evaluation, the things the public thinks you're doing, you're supposed to be doing aren't on that list and the things you are doing are on that list. It's a very strong statement. So I agree with you that it really does define the expectations. And I like it for that. I would not want to get down, I think the detail comes from, and the absence of agenda or whatever, comes from can you document?
You know, if it's a positive, document it. If it's a negative, document it. If you can't document it, then that tells me that that person is unable to validate their position and I'm not interested. So that's how I look at it. And the last thing I wanna say just as a preliminary is this is, my approach to this is not directed toward any individual board member that sits on this board today. I'm hoping to create a document that will survive this board and will be very informative to whoever joins this board in November. That's my goal. That's like my underlying motivation, I guess.
Okay, find the job and then whoever's sitting in these seats will have the same set of standards, so to speak.
Okay, sorry.
No, 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 that's good. Sorry.
Great conversation. So what we have as a draft right now is a set of, I believe Ms. Patrik estimated about 90 indicators. Is that about right?
I think that I just-
That 80-ish, 90-ish?
I thought I guessed 99,000, didn't I? I don't think it's that many because I've been through it. It didn't take me that long.
It's a comprehensive list and it's structured. The current evaluation uses four standards, four areas of interest. This one expands that to six, so they're a little more precise. And then there are a number of indicators for each one. And I'll, the draft, the full draft looks like this. It's a list of indicators.
Right.
Like this is, I don't know, can you see this? This may be too small.
Is it on their screens?
It's on our screen.
But anyway, so this is the draft we have. It is, has been, some of it's been written, some of it's been combined, adapted from multiple sources. So there's a little wordsmithing to be done to make it all look like it's from one document. There's another opportunity here if some of these indicators you think do not apply or in the conversation you just had, there was an interest in avoiding redundancy. You know, if some overlap so much that you can't really tell them apart, we would need some guidance from you over what you want deleted or combined. As a test, I took Ms. Patrik's draft and dropped it into a format that I believe we plundered or were inspired by the New York State School Boards Association Evaluation, which lists the indicator or the professional practice and then the possible data sources, similar to what we have now, but a little more, a little more detailed like what they did. And these are just, it's the same indicators that were in the draft, they've just been aligned, you know, so the grammar all matches. So they start with verbs and most of them. So that's, if that's useful, we continue that and clean that up. The big question is now that we, if we have a set of indicators and we say we're gonna clean them up and combine them if necessary, reduce some, do we want a four-point rubric for each indicator? So in other words, a statement or a group of statements for four levels of achievement for all 90 indicators. It gets to be a big document. Very precise, but big.
So my comment would be, I'm sorry, you have your hand up?
Go ahead.
So in just going through professional practice, one, two, three, four of these are really, right now we don't do 360 evaluations in the district. And the comments really refer to how subordinates perceive the leader's actions. And since we're not in a position to evaluate that, I'm not sure that some of these are things that we actually can do. And I think we ought to look forward to the day when we do 360-degree evaluations in this district. But I think until then, some of these I do have questions with. So I think it will be possible to whittle it down looking for those. Can you hold your hand up? I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I agree with that. Secondly, I agree with the four-point rubric. I think if you're gonna take subjectivity out of it, we have to know what one represents, two represents, three represents and four represents. So maybe we combine some of these or, I mean, the first thing is probably to filter these and make sure that we have the primary ones that can be measured, that we want to define the superintendent by. And then develop those rubrics from there. So I see it as a two-step process. First of all, sorting out through these and then secondly, once we have those indicators pretty well in line and we agree with those, then what's the difference between one and four and how do we measure that? And that then is what we can go back to for folks on the board that mark a four, somebody marks a four and somebody marks a one, and then you have to have evidence to support one way or the other where that all falls.
And that's a, to clarify, that's a rubric statement for each indicator?
Right. Yes.
It's quite precise, okay.
Yeah. After we've sorted through these and make sure that we have the critical ones in place. And some of them are, as I just casually looked over this, some of them are pretty vague and I think we need to give some more specificity to like 2.5 under instructional leadership, ensuring the use of practices with proven effectiveness in promoting academic success for students with diverse characteristics and needs, including. So what does that look like if somebody's not doing it? What does it look like if somebody's doing a great job at it and what are the in-betweens?
Yes, Chris?
Can you call up Indiana, please?
I think so.
And my reaction to, well, he's doing that. My reaction to you, Jane, would be that I would assume that, that the answer to that question is really a function of a report that we get from the superintendent that shows progress over time. And that's basically it.
So where does that report fall? Is it well-done? Is it a four level? Is it a one level?
Oh, oh, oh.
And how do we know the difference?
I see. Right.
What does a four level look like from that report and what-
I see where you're going.
Page 34, please.
Page 34. You have these memorized?
No, no, it's up in front of me right now on my computer. So this is what, this is what a rubric would look like to go along with each of those sub-indicators. When I said it's going to be a long document, I was not kidding. This is going to be a long document.
It's gonna be a long document. It's gonna take a while to put together too. So maybe we have to start in stages with this and keep improving it every year as we go along, but I think we have to narrow down these indicators. I mean, they're, I mean, narrow them down to the things that are really critical to an effective superintendent.
No doubt. Agreed entirely. All right.
So maybe-
And that's exactly what I'm thinking, is that as I look at this, to me, this is not refined compared to the other document. And so, and again, you know, here comes the personality thing, but you know, I want it to be succinct. I want us to identify those indicators that are, like Jane said, critical to being able to evaluate the performance of the superintendent. And I just think that when you can get lost in the words. And so I'm hoping that we can find a way to identify the critical issues, make them more succinct, and then provide, you know, what does the indicator, what does the score look like for that indicator?
And maybe we'd be better off starting small and then adding things as we go. I think that's a better way to do, find an instrument that we really feel confident with in terms of the major, the major areas that the superintendent's responsible for and that we need him to do the job of the district with. And then, then that can be expanded later on. I would rather start small and build on it than have it too overwhelming to both write and put together and secondly, complete.
And then I just had one other question really, and that was how, like how is this aligned to his Vision 2020? Because this is his framework for what he's hoping to accomplish and we're moving it out now to Vision 2030 or to, you know, our long-term planning. So how does that connect? And if he's using that as his framework, then how are we identifying those indicators that say that? You know, that say this is what he's doing in relationship to increasing parent and family involvement or to academic achievement? How, you know, how is this connecting or is it?
Maybe 2030 is a separate category. And so we'll refer to pieces of 2030 in some of these areas, but the accomplishment of 2030 itself could be a standalone category. Because we'll get the metrics.
As a separate standard, a seventh standard by itself?
Because that's our strategic plan and implementing the strategic plan would be one of the major areas that I'd be looking at. How well are we accomplishing the things that we said we wanted to? And then there's, yeah, anyway.
So then, you know, using, you know, as with the strategic planning, it's a work in progress. So then using that thought, as we, as we build on that, we need to be able to adapt, when I say work in progress, because change is constant and so the needs of the community, the growth that we experience and are expecting to experience, at least in the foreseeable future, is gonna impact what the job of the superintendent looks like. I mean, admittedly, the superintendent 15 years ago had a whole different set of responsibilities than they do today. So I think that we, you know, need to identify the critical elements and then be willing to build in some flexibility.
I'm not sure the responsibilities were different. I think what was important was different and the weight that went with these things with some of the actions was important. I really believe that a good document doesn't, won't need revision because a superintendent is a superintendent, is a district leader, is the operational leader. I mean, and I, my goal is to come up with a definition of, as Chris said, what the superintendent is. And then I do believe the strategic plan can be a reference point for us when we're documenting, but I don't think it should be embedded or attached to this at all. I think one is about the superintendent and how he does his job and the 2020 is really a measurement of what's happening in the district. So do we all agree that the categories, human capital management, instructional leadership, personal behavior, building relationships, culture of achievement, organizational, operational and resource management are sort of the five?
Six.
Six.
Thank you. The six. Well, can we, could we take the time here to go through?
Sure.
The definition or the description of each and reach consensus on that? And then I think it's easier to figure out what should go within each category. And these are taken verbatim from the Indiana evaluation because in the workshop, we reached consensus on these six major categories of evaluation and so I didn't reinvent the wheel.
That's good. I was just asking for-
Well, where does what we currently have come into play? Have we just scrapped that totally? Is there anything from what we currently use? I mean, some of those descriptors in what we currently use, I thought were on target.
Yeah, I didn't refer to our current document at all.
Yeah, I just maybe don't wanna throw the baby out with the bathwater until we know that that doesn't apply anymore. I mean, I thought those descriptors, some of them were very spot-on.
So what do we wanna do? Do we want to, standard one, as the human capital manager, the superintendent drives improvements in building leader effectiveness and student achievement.
Right.
Is that a description that we think embodies what the superintendent does? How about the chief of HR? Does that embody what you do?
Well, I, I was gonna say, I don't think it's just him. I mean, but you said this is also a reflection of the Cabinet. So I would say that in that sense, yes, it is a, it is a function of each of the chiefs and Dr. Atkins.
I wanna, I wanna copy also of our current document.
The superintendent's-
Do we only wanna work from this?
That's all we have.
Well, we have our current document too.
Well, then call, we can call that up on the screen, right?
I'm looking for it. I don't think I have it.
Well, I guess my question would be about that statement is human capital management and student achievement. Now, I don't see, I guess if you said improvements in building leader effectiveness in student achievement or at student achievement, but I don't see how student achievement comes out of human capital management. Teachers.
Well, if you don't have the right people in the right place, you're not gonna get the student achievement, I guess is the premise.
That's right. When you say building leader, see, I'm thinking it's not just the building leader, it's the teacher, it's all of the support people and so-
So it's kind of a, I look at it as a trickle-down. In other words, because teachers don't leave schools, they leave principals.
Right.
Right? So if we have the right principals in the right place, then you'll have the teachers and the paraprofessionals and the, you know, the custodians and so forth that will stay as, you know, as a result.
Okay, then where do we talk about student achievement in here?
Two is instructional leadership.
Essentially, to me-
Student performance, under instructional leadership.
Yes.
Using student performance data to evaluate. J?
What's J?
K?
H, I, J, K.
And L.
And I think M is huge. And that came from a different source?
Yes, you know, I think, I have no problem with those descriptors, but I'm looking at the relationship between the leader effectiveness and student achievement and I'm looking for something about student achievement in here that relates back to this. And I just, well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna.
There is standard five that gets that, a lot of it, but it's in a separate standard.
I won't. You wanna walk through them one by one, Chris?
No, no. What I think we should do is go through the six main categories and take the feedback. Kathleen, if you wanna change something about that sentence, this is the time to make that change. And then I think we should individually go back with this document and take out categories, subcategories that we don't wanna see in there or combine them and then give Dr. McCullers the wonderful job of having to deal with feedback from seven different board members and then put together a draft that we can approve. Is that-
Yeah, I think we have to have some time to study this before we start making any decisions.
No doubt.
And I would volunteer to work with him.
With, with-
Could I ask a quick question about the first standard? Just, I mean, I'm looking at it, you can read it two different ways. And I'm just trying to get clarification which way. As a human capital manager, the superintendent drives improvements in building leader effectiveness and student achievement. Building being-
Oh, yeah.
Building.
Building leader.
Or school level or building level.
I intended it to be administrator and building leader. Yeah.
Would it be clearer to just talk about principals?
Well, cause, but it's gotta be administrators at the district level as well.
Yeah, cause I-
It's gotta be inclusive of that.
Right, up here though.
You need to say it.
Yeah, I got you.
That's a good point.
If that's what we mean.
In this, in this phrasing, I think it almost always means administrators in school buildings when it says building leader.
So what I would, and what I would, how I would respond to that is that the nature of this particular position, you have to spend probably more time because, you know, if you think about the divisions that we have in the school district, you're spending, you know, more time with leaders in other divisions that aren't directly related to buildings because buildings have supervisors that work more carefully or closely to them, if that makes sense. So for example, in the academic area, I'm working with Dr. Creel who has, you know, Dr. Freeman, Shannon Fletcher. You see where I'm, so my day-to-day with principals is limited where I'm spending more of my time at, you know, the chief level, the executive level, the board level.
Right.
So I might be, you know, interacting more with Robert Cody on, in the leadership capacity or Trey Davis or a lot with Greg Blerton lately because we're in budget season. In fact, you know, Dr. Pruitt and I are working on a lot of leadership stuff today and I would say 50% of it is academic and, you know, then the other 50% is related in other areas.
Right.
Just a thought.
It's an important thought. It's a large district.
And is that reflected in B? If you read the end of B?
Yes, because it, you have department and building leaders.
Right. And that was, I tried to make that change throughout. I failed to make it in the descriptor.
Can I, can I just comment on, when I first looked at that, I interpreted it as building leaders. Built, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Having those skills that help people to develop those, the skills they need to become leaders. So I wasn't even looking at it as principals. I was looking at it across the board, because we hope to develop leadership qualities all the way down the pike, including in our students. So I was looking at it in a more global way. I just want to clarify that.
No, that's cool. I think that's good.
Wordsmith that.
Wordsmith that to make it clear.
So it's not confusing to anybody, especially to the community.
I have a suggestion. The superintendent promotes improvements in leader effectiveness and student achievement. Just take, as the human capital manager, superintendent promotes improvements in leader effectiveness and student achievement.
Mm-hmm.
Take out the word building.
There you go.
Yep.
Okay.
That's clear.
That's clear already.
Fits in with our continuous improvement when we look at it. So the, the, do you want to continue looking at it now? Do you want to work individually with your hands on it? What's, um, what's the best way to proceed?
I'd like to just go through the six main categories today, find consensus on the descriptors for the main categories, and then each of us dive into it individually. Take out what you don't like, add what you want to see in there. And then, again, Dr. McCullers, you're the lucky one who gets to put together a draft based on seven different people's input and bring it back. Is that...
Sure.
Is that a fair, is that cool? Is that cool? I mean, is that acceptable?
Under instructional leadership, there is a typo. The superintendent is acutely focused with a D at the end.
He is, should, should not be there. Oh, it's okay. Acutely focuses.
We'll catch those.
Acutely focuses, all right.
Okay, so that's standard one. That's, that statement is, is pretty good now?
Superintendent acutely focuses on effective teaching and learning, possesses, comma, possesses a deep and comprehensive understanding of best practices, and continuously promotes activities that can...
Well, guys, can we all look at one on the screen and say if, and see if we have any consensus surrounding that?
It's a lot clearer to me.
Okay.
Okay.
Towards student achievement, yet, and was still in there. Did we, did we decide on towards student achievement or not?
Hmm.
As the human capital manager, the superintendent promotes improvement in leader effectiveness. Okay, I don't, it doesn't matter to me. I, I thought I heard somebody say towards student achievement. No?
I don't care.
Good as is?
Yeah.
I don't know that I have the descriptors for the other...
Yes, you do.
On this section, on this document.
Yeah.
There it is.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Well, I, to me, the word, or the adverb, acutely is a descriptor, as, in other words, that would be a five. Acutely would be a five, as opposed to just, I mean, I...
Right.
How do you, how do you find, define acutely in the...
If, so if we leave the degrees and intensities and frequency for the rubric, you could just remove the word acutely and leave it like this, and then a range would work in the rubric. In other words, the degree to which...
Yes, right, correct.
Does everything is focused. Does that make sense?
That's, makes sense, yes. Thank you.
So question, by putting a colon in there, then all of those things under the colon become part of that statement?
I saw that, my instinct, if, as I did, or in the first standard, would be to rephrase it slightly so that the overall descriptor is a standalone statement, and eliminate that kind of, kind of thing. I would recommend just dropping the including in colon.
So it would be success of each student period?
Yeah.
And take out including?
That's my suggestion.
And then it would be cul, underneath that, then would be cultivates?
Right, exactly.
Plans, organizes, and supervises, uses student performance.
Right.
Establishes, ensures.
I think it's, I think it's clear that all the indicators speak to that overall descriptor anyway. You don't need the grammatical structure.
Thank you.
Superintendent acutely, so are we going to leave acutely in? The superintendent focuses on, take acutely out or not?
That's what we have right now, is to remove acutely.
Okay. So the superintendent focuses on effective teaching and learning, possesses a deep and comprehensive understanding of best instructional practices, and continually promotes activities that contribute to academic success of each student. I think that's a great statement.
But I think what you were saying, Jeff, is take out possesses a deep and comprehensive understanding and continuously promotes activities, and just make in a statement about what instructional leadership is. It's, it's teaching and learning and the academic success of the student, right? That's it. And then everything else below that is a descriptor.
We take out including. We take out the including in the colon.
Oh.
We just put a period after student, success of each student period. And then each of those is a standalone.
Exactly.
I'm okay with that statement. Mary?
So, yeah, no, that's okay. So I've been kind of wait, because that was what I was going to say a few minutes back. I would say instructional leadership, the superintendent is focused on effective teaching and learning, period. And then all the other stuff goes underneath that, if we're going to have a standalone, a succinct standalone statement for each one of those indicators.
Okay, then possesses a deep comprehensive understanding is, is, would be 2.1. I mean, that...
I mean, that, right, I think it would fit in better that way, even grammatically.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
See, I think that as an overarching statement, those are all baseline expectations of an instructional leader. And then each 2.1, 2.2, 2.3 are measurements of that entire overarching statement. Like, a deep and comprehensive understanding of best instructional practices, the words deep and comprehensive should be a baseline expectation. But that's part of teaching and learning.
Yeah, I mean, see, and, and for people who have the education vernacular more down pat, that's almost like, for me, that's understood.
Okay, but I'm a new board member joining the board.
Do you agree with that, Jane?
I'm a new board member joining the board.
Right, I understand that. But I think also for a new board member joining the board, you have to keep it simple to start with. Like, what are we talking about here? You know, I, I don't think we can, um...
What's wrong with putting possesses a deep and comprehensive understanding of best instructional practices is 2.1?
Right, right. I agree with that, yeah.
Continuously promotes activities.
Like, those are, those are strategies.
Yeah, thank you. That's the word I'm looking for.
I'm, I'm okay with that being a broad statement, because all of those are part of effective teaching and learning, instructional practices.
So... Dr. Atkins, have you got a thought? You work with this verbiage all the time, and how does, how does this work for you?
My only thought on that would be that if you have the concise statement at the top, then, you know, the possess a deep and comprehensive understanding and all that would be a, a 2.1, would be, that's, that's what I'm, my thinking.
If, if we go that way, if, in other words, the suggestion is for the, this to be just to end at focus on effective teaching and learning, create a new 2.1, which is about deep and comprehensive understanding? Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
If that's the way you go, I would suggest changing the possesses to maybe exhibits or demonstrates, you know, something that indicates the superintendent's doing something rather than what the superintendent is. And that's, that's quite workable. We could renumber everything and, and make those a new item.
And just, I don't, this is another, another thought. Superintendent's focus on effective teaching and learning, and continuously promotes activities that contribute to the academic success of the student. And then 2.1 is demonstrates a deep and comprehensive understanding of best instructional practices.
Oh, I see. Okay. Just pull the center phrase out?
Right.
Let's see what that looks like. Let's try that.
That works for me.
Something like that?
Yeah, except you'd mentioned demonstrates rather than possess.
Right, exactly.
Right.
Just the only thing, though, I'm looking at alignment, cultivating, planning, establishing, ensuring.
Right.
Right. It has to be more an action word set. He cultivates, he establishes, he ensures.
Exactly, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Can you go with that, Chris?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We're good?
Okay.
All right. Save early and save often.
You're a much smarter man than I. How many documents have I lost by failing to do that?
Okay.
These days, I'll learn my lesson.
Three is personal behavior.
Superintendent models personal behavior, sets a tone for all student and adult relationships in the district.
Right.
That's pretty comprehensive.
Mm-hmm. Taking out the including.
And take out including.
Including.
Put a period there and take out including.
Yeah.
Models, establishes. Goes above and beyond. Mary? Do you have that statement?
I'm not, but I'm not quite sure what I want to...
Oh, okay.
I'm just looking at, it's, the superintendent models personal behavior. I mean, that's a pretty tall order, to set the tone for all student and adult relationships in the district. I...
What is it, Mary, that you're...
I, I think I want, you know, I mean, the superintendent should model personal behavior that is, you know, acceptable in the community and that, you know, brings pride to the district, et cetera. But I don't know about his, well, setting the tone, yes. But I think there's just too many words there. I think that puts it into something different than, we're evaluating him. So, I mean, models appropriate personal behavior.
Yeah, I mean, we have...
You know, commands respect in the community, that kind of thing, but I...
But don't you think principals need to do that in their schools?
Absolutely.
Then why wouldn't the superintendent do that?
They're responsible for the culture.
And, yeah.
Of the, all right, so they're responsible for the culture of the school, models personal is the... you know, he sets the expectations and he sets the... to create the culture. But, again, when, I, I think when you want to talk about the things that he does in relationship to model, you know, to having appropriate personal behavior, that would come under the rest. That's just me, I'm just... I think for somebody coming in and not having any experience, and having to do an evaluation with all of these words, it's like, it's a lot of, and I don't want to call it minutia, but it's a lot of little things that, how, I mean, how do you even identify that he does that?
Well, let's try something like, the superintendent's personal behavior reflects the values of the school district.
I love that.
No, I don't, I don't like that at all.
Okay.
The district is dictating his values? That's what that statement says to me.
Well, his behavior reflects the values of the district. He can have whatever values he wants, as long as on the job, his behavior represents the values that we expect of him.
Goes along with the vision and the mission.
Takes away the responsibility for him to drive that, drive those values down into the schools. Okay. Then superintendent models personal behavior that, that is consistent with...
The vision and mission.
Values. Vision and mission.
It's fine. I can live with that. It's fine.
Is consistent with the district's vision and mission? Is that right?
And values. Now have a value statement for the district.
Superintendent models personal behavior that...
Is consistent with...
Is consistent. Oh, he's doing it.
Yeah, he's doing it.
The district's vision, mission, and values. Core values.
Does that look right?
Core values. That's what we did in our workshop. So that's, that's a specific document that can be referred to.
Yes.
And so, we didn't do that just for fun. As a place.
Everything we do is fun, Jane. Dr. Cuckle?
I know, but there are other parts to that.
What do you think of that?
Is that good as is?
Had a hard time.
Right. And I like core values in there.
I do, too.
Because we spent a lot of time putting together our core values.
So is, did you ask Dr. Atkins to reflect on that, or? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
You want that word core values in there, or is values sufficient like it is?
Well, it's the district's values.
Where do we get our values from?
Well, it's the district's values. The district, that's the descriptor, right?
Or board, were those board core values? They weren't district, they were board core values.
I thought they were district core values.
Okay.
Like that?
And I don't care. I don't have ownership in that. I think it just, it ties together what other things that we've done.
Yeah.
But I'm okay leaving it up, putting it in or leaving it out, whatever everybody wants.
So, is that consensus or...
Well, I'm, I'm waiting, is Dr. Atkins, oh, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Everybody else? Yes, okay.
All right. Building relationships.
Superintendent builds relationships to ensure that all key stakeholders work effectively with one another to achieve transformative results, period. I think transformative could be a subjective word.
It is.
I mean, I think we certainly have a concept of what that is, but it could be something different to everybody, to each of us.
Is it all stakeholders or only key stakeholders? And what's the difference?
Yeah, stakeholder, I don't think we need the word key in there.
Don't pick and choose. Do you want to work on transformative, or is it okay?
Chris, how are you on that? That's fine. I think that, I think that removing the word key sets the superintendent up for failure because there are some stakeholders who we will never reach. And so to me, the word key makes it realistic.
That's a good point.
It's pretty funny.
Yep.
Well, then, help me understand that. Who are key stakeholders? I mean, because we have our, our district staff, we have our school people, we have our parents, our community, our students.
Our advisory committees.
Everybody is a stakeholder.
Please.
Look at 4.2.
Guardians.
Got it.
Yeah.
Skillfully and clearing communicating... Clearly?
Clearly.
Communicating district goals, needs, plans, successes, and failures to all stakeholders.
I think that's perfectly descriptive. I mean, I couldn't think of any other stakeholders that we have. I mean, isn't that who we're talking about when we talk about stakeholders? Each group there...
Yeah, is a key stakeholder.
Has to be.
Don't we want all of our stakeholders really to be working together, to get the message and to work together?
We do, Mary, but there are stakeholders who we cannot reach. There are stakeholders who, no matter what we do...
But they're not stakeholders.
They are still taxpayers.
Yep.
And so they, they are still... I think the word, I think removal of the word key sets him up for failure. Sets him or any other future superintendent up for failure. Well, it does, because it provides the opportunity for, for people to single out groups that, whose needs are, needs are not being met despite the fact that the board agrees that those are not district needs. So I hear where you're, where you're going. But can we take out transformative?
Effective?
To achieve, I would say, strategic results. Or, you know, the... Because in, right now, they're transformative, but 10 years from now, they might, not that this document will last 10 years.
Yeah, I think that's a word that is, is, can be defined differently.
Yeah. Dr. Atkins?
I like strategic, I mean, it can be adjusted to your strategic plan.
You are, yeah. Everybody else? You're okay, Chris?
Yep.
Okay.
Five is culture of achievement.
Culture. Superintendent develops a district-wide culture of achievement aligned with the district's, I would say, vision and mission of success for each student, period. Because we have a clearly defined vision and a clearly defined mission.
May I point out, Dr. McCullers, I'm not sure that this matters to anybody else on the board, but for me, you might, you might find in some of these subcategories, every instead of each student, if we can replace every, every, every within each, please? Thank you. I'm okay with that. Anything illegal so far, Keith?
No.
Looking, I was...
Are you good with that?
No, I, I'm looking at 5.2, okay? Establishing a rigorous academic goals and priorities that are accepted as fixed and immovable. I don't...
Well, and I actually changed that. We're going to go through those individually and take those out. Right now, we're just doing the six main categories.
Okay, just the category.
I didn't like that one as I wrote it either.
Okay.
But again, I wanted to provide more rather than less.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I actually did come up with a word for that, but we'll get back to that later. Dr. Atkins is five?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right. Six is organizational, operational.
Resource management. Are we on to six?
Mm-hmm.
Superintendent leverages organizational, operational, and resource management skills to support district improvement and achieves desired educational outcomes. Leverages skills. Organizational, operational, resource skills to support district improvement and desired outcomes and desired educational outcomes. Achieves seems awkward for me in there, but it may have a different meaning than I'm thinking of.
Well, I'm looking at achieves desired educational outcomes and wondering how, how it's different that under instructional leadership, he contributes to academic success of each student. Well, because quality, quality schools, quality facilities, tying the budget to the strategic plan, that's not necessarily instructional leadership. You're right. But it all contributes to... You're right. Educational outcomes. Thank you.
Yeah, this seems, this seems to be a collection of professional skills.
I did, too.
Okay, so when we have...
I could take out achieves.
Yeah, and when we have organizational, operational, and resource management, do we have to repeat that again? Or can we say the superintendent leverages skills to support district improvement and achieve desired educational outcomes? I mean, do we have to repeat those three words again?
Take out achieves. Read it without achieves in there.
Oh, you're, you're talking about the, the title and the descriptor are the same.
Yeah.
That's what she's talking about.
I don't think that looks right grammatically, but, yeah, and I would take out achieves, too.
Okay.
To support district improvement and desired educational outcomes.
Right.
But I don't know that we have to repeat those three.
Well, then, why don't we just, well...
And maybe, I don't know if leverages skills is the word, but maybe there's another word that would fit in there that would indicate that he does that, that whatever he, it is that he does supports district improvement and desired educational outcomes.
Leveraging was a pretty hot HR word in the, in the 80s and persists in a lot of documents.
Does it?
You could, you could just as easily say uses a variety of professional skills or executive skills.
I like that.
Into, but it depends on what you want the emphasis to be.
I like uses a variety of executive skills. I like employees' executive skills, a variety of executive skills, I like that.
That looks better.
How's that?
Congratulations, you took us out of the 1980s.
All right.
You missed it, Denise, we talked about core values. Everybody okay with the statement as it shows up on the screen?
I think that looks, I think that looks better without the redundancy.
Okay, and Chris, you're okay?
Yep.
Okay, we're good.
Excellent, and saved. What's next?
Well, are we going to add a number seven, meeting the goals of the district's strategic plan?
I think you didn't, you didn't like that as a separate category.
Well, I, I'm just, we, we had that conversation, I don't know if we agreed to drop that or not. I don't think that, I, I think while the vision 2020 and envisioning 2030 are not specifically named in this document, I think that the goals associated with the short-term and long-term strategic plan are clearly identified. Okay. So I don't, I don't know that... You okay, Mary?
Yeah, I am okay with that, yes.
Okay.
Just to show you where I was headed.
Okay.
In the, in the first standard that I did edit a little bit, the data sources from our existing document, I cited the strategic plan. We can change that and probably show division 2030 if you like, or, but in other words, we're citing it for each indicator as something to be considered. If that's acceptable.
So, just, just a comment on that, because you already edited that part, but before, when I was saying this is a work in progress, because in the event that we ever get a different superintendent, some of that can change.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
So if you call it there, the progress of the long-term and short and long-term strategic plan, don't name it, just sanitize it.
Something like that?
Yeah.
So we're not going to add the seventh?
Correct.
Stand, we're going to leave it like, okay.
That's right.
And then we, then we can do individual edits and you can send them to me for the indicators, changes, combinations, deletions?
Can we set a timeframe for that? When, when, when is your next contract going into effect? June 5th? Oh, jeez.
Going into effect would be 1st of July.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. You're right. So I'd really like to push to get this done by the 1st of July, like a document finalized. So can, is two weeks fair? Two weeks to give the board to go through all the subcategories and delete what you don't like, combine what you want to combine? Wordsmith, do whatever it is you want to do and get the feedback to you? And then how long do you need to...
Well, to combine that, just probably a day or two. The rubric's a different question.
Yeah. It's a little more...
That's, that's substantial. We don't have to estimate, like, I could do one and then give you an estimate.
Let's go back and talk about the rubrics. Go ahead, Jane.
So why can't we stay with the current document until we have a new one that we really have put a lot of time and thought into and, and really meets the goals of every board member?
Because the one that we have doesn't meet the goals of every board member, and that's why we started down this path. And I don't think it's fair to the superintendent to change the expectations and the evaluation instrument after he's entered into the contract. I think he should start the contract with a clear set of evaluation criteria. Okay. Can we work, can, can we just talk through that rubric and, and explain what you mean by, why it's going to take you so long? Are you going to do a rubric for every single one of these?
I believe that's the instruction so far.
I would do a rubric for the categories.
Exactly.
I would not do a rubric for every single one.
Right.
But I might consider referencing in the, referencing in the descriptor the source document. I don't know what that means. So in other words, well, recruits, hires, retains, and supports effective department and building leaders who share the district's vision and mission. Okay, so we have a report from HR that shows us, what's the turnover? What's the turnover in leadership? What's the turnover in schools? Whatever.
And you're, we, you're saying we could specifically list it in the indicator itself?
Well, I'm thinking that.
Yeah.
I think when we talk about possible data sources, we ought to make certain that if we're going to use a rubric, we have a source. Maybe it doesn't belong with the indicator itself, maybe it just makes certain that it's over here in the resources.
Okay, I see.
I, I'm not, I, I can't imagine doing a rubric for every single indicator.
Well, that was what, Indiana?
But maybe.
Is that right?
After we go through the next step of looking at all of these indicators, we might have combined consolidated some...
Can you go to page 28, please? So that's what the rubric would look like for that 1.1. Superintendent effectively recruits, hires, assigns, and retains school leaders. That's what the... Okay, and how is it different from number two? I mean, how is it different from 1-2?
Well, 1-2 is right below it.
I know, can you just...
Scroll down to 1-2, yeah. There you go. So are, were these, are these also from the same place, so we could use the rubric? We don't have to reinvent the rubric?
Uh, yes, that's...
Essentially, once we kind of, once we've edited and...
Most of these indicators come.
Right.
We find these, you can go back to that rubric and...
Possibly, to the degree that we, you know, modify them, but yeah, there, there could be a lot there.
Okay.
It's a very precious document, for sure.
So are we going to be able to work right on our electronic version to make our, our suggestions or changes, modifications?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I would, that would be great, yeah.
You'll send that to us?
That would be great, but pencil works, too. Yes.
All right, so I think that this rubric thing is really important because I'm, I, I thought in the beginning that we were going in the direction of what we see on the screen, and now I'm hearing, no, we want more general categories. Well, no, but I feel much better now that, i, if, if we're basically going to, if, if you're not going to rewrite rubrics for everything that we do and you're just going to essentially amend what we have or what somebody else has done, that's okay.
That's, that's a lot more workable.
But I still think there needs to be, well, maybe not, maybe not, just an overall rubric for each. With that, Mrs. Morgan?
Ended up being 40 pages long.
Yeah.
But it is, it is quite precise.
Yeah, it is.
That's obviously what they were after.
Rubric is a critical piece.
Yeah, it is.
For a objective, consistent evaluation that has meat to it.
Well, for example, let's just look at 1-2. The superintendent creates a professional development system for school leaders based on strengths and needs.
Superintendent uses data from performance evaluation to assess efficiency.
Oh, so that, that goes with prioritizes the evaluation of department and building leaders over competing commitments and uses evaluation systems that credibly differentiate the performance of department and building leaders. So I looked at that descriptor and I said, that's a, that, that descriptor comes from subordinates and peers, it doesn't come from superiors.
Right.
So when I read the rubric, I, to me, the rubric doesn't fit the...
The, the information that we have.
Yeah. But if we agree to say that, we're going to take B out, then I don't...
Yeah.
...care about the rubric. So...
Or we say we're going to develop some kind of a 360 type of evaluation.
Well, we can put those all back in when we have a 360.
When we have, when we're there.
Yeah. Angela just sits there and smiles and she says to herself, it's all good. It's, but what's your phrase? It's a happy day?
I apologize, I have to leave, I have to go to a deposition, so I'll see you in a little while.
Go for it. But what is your phrase?
It's all good.
It's all good.
It's all good.
Okay.
It's all about the relationships, too.
Okay.
Ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
So...
She has many, many little phrases.
Yeah.
If we go about transferring the, these rubric descriptors over, I'll keep an eye out for, for those kinds of, of things that... out for, for those kinds of things that may not be practices we currently have.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll flag them, organize them.
Good, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I've done some editing, what I think is to that effect.
Great, great.
So I'll, I'll give that to you.
Great.
Okay, what else?
Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Yeah. Mary?
Very cool.
You're okay?
I'm fine, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you about the, the indicators and the rubric. I mean, how would we know some of that? You know what I mean? That the, the little nitpicky things that people who were in those departments would know, but we wouldn't. And, and are we at good of the order yet?
No, I just want to make one comment, I think we need to get there. I think the fact that we don't have that information is, is not a reason not to, not to try, not to aspire.
Exactly.
To learn about our superintendent from the people who.
Right.
Worked for him.
Exactly.
Just like students should evaluate teachers and teachers should evaluate principals and.
Yes, and the students were right on board this year because that was one of their big suggestions, yeah.
Okay. Who, the community, that's what we did in RYE. We just basically said, this is a board evaluation, we put it out to the community.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, uh-huh, and it had, it was maybe, I forget how long it was. No, because it got frustrating that the community kept coming to us and saying, you should do this or do that. Well, that's not my job, you know? So if you put the thing out there and people can only evaluate you on what your job is, then it helps clarify.
Right.
What your role and responsibilities are.
And interestingly, yesterday I, I called a school and the person who answered said, who's calling?
Angela.
And I said, you know, Ms. Fisher, School Board. She had no clue who I was or what the School Board is.
Mm-hmm.
And she works for us. So I think that putting it out there in the community is a really good idea because that helps heighten the awareness in the community.
Yeah.
And we are a big, big business.
Okay, are we done with that? Chris is done. The coffee hasn't helped.
That's a big project, Chris.
Thank you very much, Chris, and Dr. McCullers. It's a lot of work and I appreciate you diving in. Okay, good of the order. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm good of the order. I was wondering now that we're doing this and our next evaluation of the superintendent will be the interim evaluation in November, so then that means to me that we're not doing a final evaluation of him for this school year. I.
We already did. Didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
We just, we just did that.
That was.
What?
That was the interim.
Oh, but you know what? The interim is almost the same as the, that's right. My bad, I thought we already did.
No.
Well, yeah.
Okay, so I'm, yeah, because I, my interpretation of the interim is that at that time, we identify things that maybe are, could be opportunities for improvement or could be things that we really want for him to continue doing because of the feedback we receive. So I don't know that we shouldn't have a final evaluation for this school year. Just putting that out there for the rest of the board to consider.
Is anything I ever write in my evaluation a surprise to you? Honest, is it? Have you ever been surprised by something I've written in the evaluation?
Are you asking me or Dr.?
No, I'm asking, Dr. Atkins.
Your evaluation.
Not my evaluation. Would, would a end-of-this-school-year evaluation be instructive to you, helpful to you, helpful to transitioning to this in your new contract?
The only struggle that I would have is that any corrective actions that were just given to me, there hasn't been really any opportunity to, to take action on that. And, you know, there obviously were some, now we have been, but to have an immediate effect, I mean, it felt like we just completed the process.
Exactly, exactly.
But I would say, to Mary's point, we're going to be, we're going to have a new board in November, and I think it is important that this board has in hand a final eval, you know, an annual evaluation for this superintendent, that we don't have an 18-month gap. I'm just wondering how we can do it quick and dirty. I'm sorry. Looking to see if there's any press here, I don't see any press.
We'd have to use the old, the existing.
That's what I mean, use the existing instrument, but not, not, you know.
All right, well, I mean, really, it would just be a transfer of.
Yeah, I know.
Of what we put on the intrums onto the final, if, if, you know.
I just don't, I don't want the community to be in a position of saying, you're giving the superintendent a contract without having done an annual evaluation, you've got a new board coming on and you don't have that documentation in the file. That's what makes me nervous. I'm not sure that we need to have all the commentary, but just a record that the board has done, an evaluation of this superintendent for this year. Yeah, Keith?
So just to lay out the dates, under the present contract, the annual evaluation is due to September 15.
Yeah.
Of course, the intention is to have a new contract long before then. Under the new contract, the design as we have right now is a November 1 interim.
Right.
Assessment and a May 1 annual.
Okay, but, so we had in September, an annual, and then we had this winter, an interim. Okay. And so our next annual will be.
Well, it would be September under the current contract, but if, if you don't add, if you don't change the present language that's coming forward, the next annual would be May 1.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So that's a year away. Can we adjust the language for just this particular year, you know, to kind of complete that cycle and have that before the new board comes on and for the benefit of the community and the fact that we have made some, are making some changes to the superintendent's contract?
Yes.
I don't, I don't know how we have a new contract and a new evaluation instrument and evaluate him on the new evaluation instrument or the old evaluation. Like, what, do we want him to dance and stand on his head at the same time? You know what I mean? Like, it seems like there's two different sets of expectations there.
Well, but this, this whole past school year was based, I'm assuming he was working based on the, the current contract and the current evaluation instrument.
Right.
So making this change then puts us into, I think, a little bit of a predicament with the community based on the fact that we're looking to approve a new contract, you know, along with the evaluation instrument, which I think is important for us to do.
So then do we do it before he signs the new contract? Do we complete it before he signs the new contract?
That's, that's not consistent with the current contract, which is September.
Then not fine. Is it against the law for us to?
We can amend the current contract in advance of adopting, and the board can amend its current.
Right, and specify the reason why or not necessary.
As long as the parties agree that the purpose is not subject to any legal test.
Is that something you would be amenable to, Dr. Atkins?
No.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine. It, you know, it's, again, it's, I, I feel like we just went through this process.
I know.
That's the, that's my only hesitation, that's all there is, and I, but I certainly understand the sentiment of board members of wanting to do an evaluation prior to a contract. And, you know, so really, truly, whatever you want to do in this as a board, I'm absolutely fine with, truly, truly.
So then, Dr. Atkins and Mr. Martin, could the interim assessment that we just completed in April suffice for this year's evaluation since it was close to the end of the school year?
It's, it's up to the board, if the board feels that's sufficient for.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't we just make a statement to the effect that his interim was his final?
Right, in lieu of.
And move on?
The new contract and new evaluation instrument.
And how, do we have to do anything formal with that, Mr. Martin? No?
Just that we have that if anyone asks.
Just put something on file, so we'll draft something and prove it and move on? Is that, is everybody okay?
Including an explanation of the change in contract dates and all that.
Yeah, 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 uh-huh.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. Is that it, Mrs. Fisher?
That's it for me today, yes.
I'd like to raise the issue of never discussing evaluations ever again as long as we live.
You do get sick days.
You get sick days?
You get sick days.
I don't understand what that means.
It means you can call in sick.
Oh.
Anybody, I have two, but does anybody else have anything?
No.
Okay.
At, at our last meeting, we talked about Keith bringing forward a good cause item that the board would direct him to negotiate the contract. Keith advises me that that's not necessary, and Keith and I are already working on that contract, so there's no need to bring it forward. So if you're looking for it as a good, not a good of the order, a.
A good cause.
A good cause, yeah.
There's, there's no need for the board to vote to give direction for that purpose. Of course, there will be a vote at the time the contract comes forward.
Right, right. And the other thing is, and I was hoping Lauren would be here, but she's not, so I'm going to let that go. It was about the board member message, I don't know where we are on board member messages. Are you, you're up.
I'm up June 5.
Okay. Mine's done, I just haven't.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, good. We're current, okay. Okay, that's it for me, yes. Dr. Coughlin?
I just want to thank you all for filling in for me in the last three weeks or so. It was, was nice to know that I could just take care of myself and things are good.
And you have to take care of yourself.
Yes.
Because you do. Glad to see you better.
Yes. Okay, then I guess we are adjourned and we next meet in.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.